Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, this is working. Welcome to Grinsby's virtual council meeting Monday, April 6, 2020. First call to order. First off, are there any disclosures of interest? All right, Counselor Bothwell.
Nope.
All right, I'm just gonna do a roll call. I didn't see anyone raise their hands for disclosures of interest, so I'll do a roll call right now. So Counselor Bothwell is here. Counselor Dunstall.
Here.
Counselor Frake. Did he say here? Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell's here. I didn't hear him, but. Counselor Ritchie?
Here. Here.
Yeah, Counselor Sharp.
Here.
Counselor Vane?
Here.
And Counselor Barty. Counselor Barty is here.
Here.
All right, and so everyone is here. There's disclosures of interest. There is none. And first, I have an announcement. Due to COVID-19 and recommendations by the Niagara region public health to exercise physical distancing, Grinsby's Town Hall is currently closed to the public until further notice. Members of the public are invited to participate in open meetings electronically by assessing the meeting livestream available at the town's website. The town will host council meetings electronically until the requirements of physical distancing have been lifted by Niagara region public health. And because Ontario has declared an emergency that will delay most town business, and our economic losses may be significant, we should freeze hiring retroactive to March 16, 2020. This can be revisited after a return to normalcy. Anything otherwise would not be in the best interests of Grinsby. We don't know at this point how long the pandemic will continue, so it is very important that the town have adequate cash flow to maintain sufficient liquidity and maintain operations during this unprecedented time. All right. Adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Frake. Seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that council meeting minutes of March 2, 2020 be approved. Counselor Bothwell? That's a yay.
I was just, yeah, that's a yay. Oh, you're doing a
Yeah, if you lift your hand, if there's no discussion, that might be the easiest, and then I'll just keep with my mic on. Counselor Dunstall. That's a yay. Counselor Frake? Yay. Counselor Cadwell? Yay. Counselor Ritchie? Yay. Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Vane? Yay. Counselor Barty? Yay. And myself, yay. So that has been carried. Mover and a seconder for the special council meeting of March 9, 2020. Counselor Cadwell? Seconder. Counselor Bothwell? Resolve that special council meeting minutes of March 9, 2020 be approved. Counselor Bothwell? That's a yay. Counselor Dunstall? Yay. Counselor Frake? Yay. Counselor Cadwell? Yay. Counselor Ritchie? Yay. Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Vane? Yay. Counselor Barty? Yay. And myself, yay. That is carried. The special council meeting of March 18, 2020. Need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Frake. Resolve that the special council meeting minutes of March 18, 2020 be approved. Counselor Bothwell? It's in favor. Counselor Dunstall? In favor. Counselor Frake? In favor. Counselor Cadwell? In favor. Counselor Ritchie? In favor. Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Favor. Counselor Vane? In favor. Counselor Barty? In favor. Myself in favor. So that's carried. Special council meeting minutes of March 25, 2020. Mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Cadwell. Counselor Bothwell? In favor. Counselor Dunstall? In favor. Counselor Frake? In favor. Counselor Cadwell? In favor. Counselor Ritchie? Favor. Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
In favor. Counselor Vane? Favor. Counselor Barty? Favor. I'm in favor. That's carried. Up next, we need a mover and a seconder for the written delegation of Hugh Handy. Counselor Sharp, seconded by Counselor Vane. Counselor Bothwell? Favor. Counselor Dunstall? Favor. Counselor Frake? In favor. Counselor Cadwell? Favor. Counselor Ritchie? Favor. Counselor Sharp? Favor. Counselor Vane? In favor. Counselor Barty? Favor. And myself in favor. That's resolved that the written delegation from Hugh Handy GSP Group regarding 361 South Service Road be received, and that's been carried. Up next, we have Committee Minutes approval, Administration and Finance from March 9, 2020. Counselor Frake, did you want to speak on that?
Yes, yes. Sorry, yes. I'll be very quick. It was a short agenda. Can you hear me all right? Yes?
Yep.
We met on the 9th of March, 3:30. We called the order. And no disclosure of interest, no business arising. There was two reports on the agenda. Both of them were fire department related. The Grimsby Fire Department Fees and Charges Report, which covered about 40 to 50 different fees and charges, which for 2020. Some of these fire inspection fees included the user pay cost recovery approach to the fees. They are applicable to routine inspections and also special inspections. Fees for searches for lawyers, client purchasing a property, those types of things. So we went through them and we approved it at the meeting. The other report was FCR 2003, and that was for the appointment of the acting fire chief, which is Bill Boyd, who would fill in for Bill Thompson when he's away. So that was also discussed, and that was carried as well. So that was the two items on the agenda. That's pretty much it. Any questions? I'll answer them. It's not too much on there, but if you have a question, I'll answer.
Counselor Cadwell, you have a question?
Yeah, just maybe some clarification on the acting chief. I believe there was two people that were talked about at the Mid and Finance. Just looking for clarification on that.
Am I on? Okay. My understanding that Rick Boyd was chosen as to be the acting fire chief. I'm not familiar with the second one. Unless Harry wants to speak to that, I have one report here, which which is for the appointment of a acting fire chief in the absence of our current acting chief, and that we have to put a person in place to act in his behalf according to our bylaw. So that's the fire bylaw. So there's only one that I'm aware of, Counselor Cadwell. Harry, unless you want to speak to that? Is some change that I don't know about?
Is Harry gonna speak?
If I may, I'm sorry, I can't find the button to put my hand up, but my understanding was sort of two things. There were two names put forward who could be acting chief while he was gone. So it could be either of those two. However, he was about to leave on vacation, and he named a particular person as acting chief for that time period. So if that helps to clarify.
Yeah, I think that does. Counselor Vane, you had a question?
There was originally two names, but that's fine.
All right, Counselor Frake?
Yeah, first, there was only one name mentioned at the meeting, but I know there's two names. There's two appointments noted on today's agenda. Bill is not here to answer.
Yeah, Bill's not here, so. All right, so are you, do you have more of your report? So?
No, that's it.
Okay, all right. Moved by Counselor Frake, seconded by Counselor Barty, resolve that the Administration and Finance meeting minutes of March 9, 2020 be received, and the recommendations contained therein be approved. Counselor Bothwell? Counselor Bothwell's in favor. Counselor Dunstall? Counselor Dunstall's in favor. Counselor Frake? Counselor Frake is in favor. Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell's in favor. Counselor Ritchie? Counselor Ritchie's in favor. Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp's in favor. Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vane's in favor. Counselor Barty? Counselor Barty's in favor, and myself in favor. So that is carried. Up next, we have the Planning and Development Committee meeting from March 10, 2020. Counselor Bothwell, would you like to give a bit of a review?
Sure, I can do a quick overview. So as the delegation tonight, the documented letter that's on file with the agenda, it's supporting one of the items that was on our planning agenda for the official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment for the superstore property where they are looking at doing a retail expansion on site, and there were a number of public meetings held with regards to that. And this is the final step in approving that official plan and zoning bylaw amendments for 361 South Service Road. There were a few questions again about some site plan kind of issues that came up at that meeting, which will be addressed further in the process at site plan. But overall, the committee was in favor and carried that motion for those amendments to go through. The terms of reference for Grimsby Beach Study was brought forward, the draft, and there was some comments on that, and the request that the Heritage Committee be consulted and provide input to the terms of reference, as well as there was a number of members of the community that also provided some input, but we expect to see that further along on our agenda this evening, and there'll be much more information provided with the report that is included this evening. So that was, the draft was carried with some of those, that request for the consideration of any comments that were received up to tonight's meeting. So I'm sure we'll hear about how those have been incorporated into it or taken into account. The Heritage Grimsby Advisory Committee meeting of March 3 was provided for information and received by the committee. Some of the items that are in there, it'll show just there was 242 Main Street East was demolishing a porch and actually putting on a new, replacing it with something that would be quite complimentary to it, and that was that was carried. Three more, four more addresses were added to the municipal heritage register, 6 Bolton Avenue, 264 Kerman, 30 Murray, and 132 Main Street East. Some correspondence was received as well through the Heritage Advisory Committee items, and you can see those in the minutes as well. There are some changes coming about with regards to Development Charges Act and the Community Benefits Charges, and we'll be seeing more of that. It'll be reported on as it gets refined a little more at the ministry. Status of the development applications was reviewed. We went into closed session for a discussion on an LPAD appeal, and the outcome of that was that staff were directed to obtain legal counsel to represent the town's interests with respect to the appeal of 226 to 228 Main Street East. I'll answer any questions if there are any with regards to those minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Vane?
You wanted to lift a particular section of the Heritage Report, please?
All right, what section would you like to lift?
I believe it's 20-19. The clerk confirmed that.
All right. Moved by Counselor Vane. Do we have a seconder for Counselor Vane's motion to lift? Counselor Sharp? Moved by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Sharp. Resolve that Resolution Number 2019 be lifted from the Planning and Development Committee meeting minutes of March 10, 2020 for separate consideration. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
I'm not sure why, but okay.
All right, Counselor Bothwell's in favor. Counselor Dunstall? Counselor Dunstall's in favor. Counselor Frake? Counselor Frake is against. Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell's in favor. Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie's in favor. Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp's in favor. Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Barty? Counselor Barty's in favor, and myself, I'm in favor. So that is lifted, that's carried. Counselor Vane, you'd like to speak on that?
Yeah, it's more procedural issues related to the particular item that I'm concerned about. First of all, one of the items, one of the properties was just introduced on the day of the meeting. My understanding is it's supposed to be introduced prior to that, but it was brought up on that particular day. I was also concerned that there are some comments in regards to a development, which I believe was lifted from this particular, wasn't showing up in this particular minutes, but there was a property where it was commented by a member of the committee. They don't want to have the property subdivided. They don't want it to be sold because it'll be subdivided, and the the, which goes again exactly in line with what I said before about using heritage as a weapon. The, in the particular property in question, all it was was a piece of grass that we were trying to protect. It was just a piece of grass, which doesn't make any sense at all. And also, members of the committee were directing staff to get a peer review because the, our heritage expert at the town didn't agree with the peer review on the same property. And there was also some talk of designating churches, even though a lot of them don't want to be designated. So I'm quite concerned about the way this committee performed their advisory duties. It was more of a acting like a full-fledged committee, almost like acting like council. So I'm quite concerned, and I believe that this needs to be reviewed, this process. Designating four properties, I don't have any problems with any of the properties in order of planning. I just don't think it was appropriately done for an advisory committee to be giving direction to staff and to making comments that we don't want to have a property sold because we don't want it subdivided. Are we protecting a particular group of people in a certain neighborhood, or, I mean, it's very inappropriate the way this committee was, is my opinion. So that's all I wanted to raise, and I do think it needs to be looked at further by council. So that was my only point for raising it.
Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor. Just going to respond to that. The Heritage Act provides for the advisory committee to designate, not designate, to recommend properties to be put on the municipal heritage register. This process is, has been a very informal process over many, many years while the committee's been in place, and what it is, is it's basically looking at from a street view and from a community view of which properties are of value to be potentially designated, putting them on the register. It doesn't, it only offers them a 60-day protection from demolition. That's all it's doing. What happened was quite a number of these addresses were generated by a number of members of the committee who have had experience and are very versed in what would constitute a heritage building, and these were recommended properties. The, I don't know what he's referring, what Counselor Vane is referring to, about a piece of grass, because each of these are actually residential properties, and some, the one on Main Street, particularly 132 Main Street East, is a significant piece of property with a large home on it, which is, the potential is that the history of some of these properties is significant and needs to be protected. So at this point, I'm not too sure where the allegations are coming from, from Counselor Vane's perspective, that the committee was not acting within its scope and mandate, which, in my mind, every member of the committee is very respectful of our duties under the Heritage Act and our terms of reference as well, which provides for us to bring these recommendations forward to staff, not for staff to tell us what should be put into it, but for the Heritage Committee to recommend these properties for further review. At this point, there's quite a number of properties on the heritage register. We have exhausted the ones that have been recommended by the committee to date and put forward through the agenda. So what we have also done through our terms of reference and our mandate for the next, the rest of this term is we've determined that we are going to come up with a scoping exercise to determine how we're going to prioritize further properties to put on the register, and that's part of our work plan. So we are going to be looking at a little bit more of a structure as to where there might be clusters of homes that are significant that we should be looking at protecting. We might be looking at the type of construction of the home, the actual builder of the home, if there's a history and a significance to Grimsby that we should be protecting. So there's a whole lot of different ways that we look at whether a home should be considered just to even be put on the register. There wasn't, even in previous Heritage Committee experience, from my understanding, is there wasn't any rhyme or reason as to how homes were actually picked. So it was basically on the expertise of the committee members who, from driving around the neighborhoods or whatever, or from researching things through the archives, became familiar with certain properties. So I'm unsure where Counselor Vane is reaching with this as to this not being our mandate, or not, or that we're doing something outside of our scope, because in my mind, we're doing everything we can to protect heritage in Grimsby, and these, wherever there's a property or properties that the potential is that we're risking losing them, and there's potential that there's heritage resources or cultural resources that are linked to that property, or we should be protecting them. That's the mandate of the committee and as well within our strategic priorities. So that's what we're doing. Whether or not these properties end up becoming designated is probably a long process, because there's quite a list of them, but this point, it's just saying that we would like to have, should the property owner determine that the home, for whatever reason, is going to be demolished, then we have 60 days to assess whether there's significance to have those properties designated. So that's the whole intent of this process, and I'm just a little, I'm just a little concerned that, you know, that there's something more has been made of this, because it's been pretty transparent from day one as to, you know, if we have, we do look for areas that might be in threat of a potential redevelopment, and if there are significant homes, that would be the reason we would bring them forward and say, hey, we need to look a little further at this, because the potential is that property could be redeveloped. Is there anything that we want to look at? From a perspective of, should we be protecting that property or designating that property in some way? It doesn't mean they will be, and it doesn't mean that we can protect every property, but it just allows us the time to do a further review of the significance of those properties.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Any further comment on this? Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, your worship through you. I just want to add some clarification for Counselor Vane's comments, and that is that I think he's referring to the property 122 Main Street East, where we're looking at designating that property, and I think that that's where we had discussed a peer review for that particular property. The choosing properties to put on the registry is one thing, but this house was not the one that I think that Counselor Vane was talking about, was had to do with the property itself, the land also. I think that was in discussion at that meeting, and that doesn't show up in the minutes, but I think that's what Counselor Vane was talking about, was 122 Main Street East.
Thank you, Counselor Dunstall. Counselor Vane, further comment?
I know, Counselor Dunstall's correct. I just, as I was saying, I picked this one because it was part of the properties that were discussed. I realized it wasn't put on the minutes for whatever reason, but there was two points here that I think we got lost on those four houses. I was concerned that a comment was made about 122, that we want to make sure it doesn't get sold, because then they might subdivide it. I don't think that's appropriate for us to be making that decision, because, or that kind of comment, because that's not our job to sit there and prevent development. And also, the directing staff to order a pre-review just because the town heritage expert didn't agree with it, and to take money from the planning reserves. I can appreciate heritage. I'm very big on heritage, but we've also got people calling up and complaining that they don't like their taxes being raised $11 a month. So yet, we're going to keep spending more and more and more money, and it's just some of the comments that were made just didn't really hit me as being heritage. Like, you know, one house, they weren't sure if there was really a history to it of the four. You know, and maybe they've gotten some since then, but it's just, I'm just not happy with it at this point, that's all. And like Counselor Dunstall said, the main thing is the
Point of order, we're off topic on lifting the item that was lifted, and this has nothing to do with the item that was lifted.
Has everything to do with the item that was lifted? What part, did you want to dispute the part about selling to subdivide that you said that? Or did you want to dispute the part that where you ordered the planning staff to take money from planning reserves? Which part do you want to dispute? Go ahead.
Mayor Jordan, I think the intent was that the item was lifted with regard to the four properties. Any discussion that is outside of that is not what was lifted in this motion. So I'm just, I'm also not, I'm not understanding where Counselor Vane is going with this discussion. If he's alleging that there was improper discussions held at a heritage meeting, I don't think this is the forum for that discussion.
I agree. Your point is noted. All right, any further comments?
Even in the minutes, though. So I'm a little concerned here that we're going to pick and choose what we put in minutes so that we can't be attacked on it, or is that how it works?
Well, technically, minutes are not supposed to have commentary in them.
But it also doesn't have 122 Main Street, which was discussed a great deal.
But if it wasn't designated, or it wasn't a motion to designate, it doesn't, I don't think it really matters. It's a moot point, whether it was discussed or not.
Well, I guess if you want to look at it that way, sure.
Really, truly.
I don't agree. I think we're using heritage as a weapon, and I'm trying to make that point here. So anyways, you cover it up however you wish.
Well, I actually think that was out of order, Counselor Vane, saying someone's trying to cover it up. Is that becoming a threat, or?
Point of order, Counselor Vane was clearly out of line.
Speaking right now. Speaking right now.
That's inappropriate.
I'm speaking right now. I have no problem, we've changed in the words, and I apologize if it was misunderstood. I'm just saying that if you don't want to deal with it, that's fine, but I think we're overlooking a very important issue here, because we're, we're clearly trying to concerned, that's all.
All right, so that was lifted, so let's talk about the rest of the Heritage Min- or Planning and Development Meeting Minutes now. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Vardy, resolved that Planning and Development Meeting Minutes of March 10th, 2020 be received. The recommendations contained therein be approved. Counselor Bothwell? In favor? Counselor Dunstall? Favor? Counselor Frake? In favor? Counselor Cadwell? In favor? Counselor Ritchie? Yay. In favor? Counselor Sharp?
I just have a question. Should we not first deal with the motion that was lifted and then approve?
It was, it was lifted but not voted separately. It was just lifted. There's no amendment, there's no amendment to it.
Understood. My vote is yay.
Okay. Counselor Sharp, yay. Counselor Vane?
No.
Counselor Vane, nay. Counselor Vardy? Counselor Vardy, yay, and myself, yay. And so that is carried. Up next, we have Public Works from March 11th, 2020. Counselor Cadwell, a brief comment.
Yes, Mayor Jordan, thank you. Be happy to comment. It's quite a while ago, anyways. Yeah, we had the, the meeting was called the order at 4:30. There was no disclosures of interest by any committee members. The first report is the assumption of Municipal Services, Garden View subdivision. Again, that is just the normal housekeeping procedures. The developer was given a, the release of the current letter of credit, the amount of $272,222. And all the deficiencies to that, that subdivision are all in order. Garden View subdivision was formerly known as Summers Lane subdivision, received draft plan by Grimsby Council way back in July of 2006. So that, that report was approved by committee. We also had a report regards to the 376 Winston Road sidewalk patio area. And it was, Brandon gave us an update, our director, interim director of Public Works. Mr. Warman gave us a update on the request that was brought to the town by the Olive Board at 376 Winston Road, to allow for them to install a patio in the front of their business. The patio would be approximately 13 feet by eight feet, and there's a lot of sidewalk there, so the committee had no problem approving that, just to give, there were 12 requirements, so just, let's, I'll name, I'll just review a few of them here. Patio would need to be removed by the business by October 31st. And that, that also, that date, these dates that I'm going to be reading are for all patios in the town of Grimsby, whether it's downtown or out at the Winston Road area, and not to be reinstalled until after April 15th. So I think unfortunately, with the state of the, the global world right now, I don't, will be seeing any patios. You know, in the very, very near future, but hopefully that all comes to, comes, comes to fact later. There are no fees to the permit when the business is applied for a patio. The permit is subject to termination by resolution of council at any time, for any reason, as decided by council. So again, that was supported by the committee, and I hope things get a lot better, because I think that's an awesome spot for a patio. We also had a report, the appointment of weed inspectors. This one is appointing our operations manager, Richard Sparham, our roads department foreman, Ryan Newton, and Chris George, as our weed inspectors for the town of Grimsby. Just a little bit of an origin here, during staff's transition in 2018 and 2019, town staff relied upon certified weed inspectors from the region of Niagara to assist in any weed control issues that occur. The weeds are obviously part of property standards, so when complaints get brought forward, we do investigate and take care of it. And we, under that's the report's correspondence, we had a an update with regards to the Niagara region Park Road reservoir upgrade. That construction is underway right now. I took a drive-by today, and it's getting to be a pretty, pretty deep hole in the ground up there, which is, it's just the property that is on the, I'm going to call it the southeast side of, of, sorry, Ridge Road and Park Road, so. So again, that is definitely, the region is constructing, constructing a very large reservoir, underground reservoir there. We also had another correspondence with regards to the, let me just get my paper here. Yeah, we had the correspondence with regards to the wastewater master servicing plant update, and I'm just going to read the paragraph here, and that, that pretty much gives everybody the information they need. Niagara region has started environmental assessment for the Baker Road wastewater treatment plant pollution prevention control plant and wastewater master servicing plant update. This wastewater treatment plant services the town of Grimsby, the town of Lincoln, and townships of West Lincoln slash Smithville area. This update will serve as an opportunity to summarize previous PCP recommendations and identify further servicing needs to support long-term growth, sustainability, and manage, and management of the wastewater system. The study will include any upgrades to the pumping stations in Grimsby that are at Robinson Street and, and Lake Street, and also our Woodsview Pumping Station, that is in the north ward of Lake Side Drive. There will be public meetings to be hosted in Grimsby, and at this time, again, with the state of the affairs in there, that we're dealing with right now, there's no date at this time, so that was another report. Then we got into other businesses, which were verbal reports. And the first one was the Winston Road archery. It's up, looks great. There's still some more work to be done to it. They're, they're going to be bricking the, the the post on either side. The, the lighting is going to be done too, for the Grimsby at the lake, so I think it's, it's an awesome looking, looking archery for that area too. So there was a planned bit of a ribbon cutting for June the 18th, but who knows if that's going to happen or when that's going to happen, but I know the, speaking with some of the businesses and and some of our planning staff people, the, there's a lot of excitement down there with that arch break. We also had a verbal report on the Winston Road reconstruction, which was, the the work was pretty much completed and the road was reopened around March the 4th, and everything went really well there. The retaining walls, they will be, every two years, they will be re-inspected, because that road is definitely going to be a challenge in the future for us. Also, we had a verbal report update with regards to the Dorchester Drive Nellis Road Study. And again, the, there will be an information gathering session for the residents, and that study, back in March 11th, when we had the report, was planned to be ready, be comple- sorry, be completed sometime in June, but again, with the, there's everything going on, that's pretty much we'll, we'll have to take that day by day. The next Public Works meeting will be, how we're going to do it, will be April 15th. So that's all I have for now, and any questions, I'd be happy to entertain with the help of the committee members from Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Furtick. And the April 15th meeting will be canceled. It's, it's already been canceled. There's nothing scheduled before May 18th at this point. Any further questions? Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, your worship. I, I guess the question was answered by Counselor Cadwell, but I just wanted to thank him for clarifying about the outdoor patio at the Olive Board. I wasn't sure if downtown patios came under the same scrutiny, and I'm glad to hear that. Also, I just wanted to mention that we wouldn't be involved in whether or not it was licensed. That would be up to the owner of the premises, and they would go through the Alcohol and Gaming Association. So if people are wondering if it'll be licensed or not, we, we wouldn't be able to tell them that ourselves, that there's, that's a separate that's a provincial jurisdiction. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dunstall. Seeing no further questions, moved by Counselor Cadwell, seconded by Counselor Frake. Resolved that the Public Works Meeting Minutes of March 11th, 2020 be received, and the recommendations contained therein be approved. All in favor? Counselor Bothwell? Counselor Bothwell's a yay. Counselor Dunstall? Counselor Dunstall's a yay. Counselor Frake? Counselor Frake's a yay. Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell's a yay. Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Is a yay. Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vane's a yay. Counselor Vardy? Counselor Vardy's a yay, and myself a yay, so that is carried. I'm just going to change. I forgot to allow Counselor, Regional Counselor Furtick to speak, so just before the report. If that's okay with everyone, I'm going to allow him to give a regional update. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. You hear me loud and clear? All right? Thanks, Mayor Jordan, course counsel, staff, and CAO, and all our constituents. It's, it's really been a different world that we lived in over the last few months. I want to give thanks to our frontline heroes, who have helped us every day in fighting this deadly virus. During my time in the military, Pierre Elliott Trudeau declared the War Measure Act. I was scared then, I was only 23 at the time. But now we got a state of emergency in Canada with a virus that is devastating the entire world. I'm super scared now. Please, listen to the authorities. The number of cases is staggering. And so is the number of deaths. The provincial and the federal governments have come out with some excellent programs for our business community. Unfortunately, I believe that they have stopped short in trying to help them in their immediate needs. Their immediate needs are cash flow. I ask you to consider any way to help relieve the taxpayer of any burden of depleting their cash flow, at least for a couple of months, to help them to come back after these unprecedented times. I hope to meet with the regional chair to discuss some of my concerns, and I will be joining Mayor Jordan and, and doing a presentation to them. I've also suggested to the region to consider any efforts that the municipalities can do in order to help our business computed, uh, community. There's not anything that I want to say further in reference to what's happening at the region, but I do specifically want to say that our mayor is doing an excellent job in keeping us all informed. And I hope we are taking the information that he is giving us and informing the constituents. I'm sure we are. Please, Grimsby residents, stay safe. Continually support each other by staying not six feet away. Wash your hands and stay at home. We can conquer this horrible virus and do it together. If we need help, or if you need help in any way, please, don't hesitate to call me by phone or email, and I'm sure that if you called your local counselor, we'll bend over backwards to try and help you. We have to conquer this virus. I think that's the most important message I can tell you today, and I thank you, Mayor Jordan, and, and council for giving me the opportunity to speak. Stay safe. Thank you.
Counselor Vane, you want to comment?
I, I just have a question. It was one thing that was raised by a constituent, and I did already flip this to Counselor Furtick. I just wondered if you got an answer. One constituent was asking about because we're all at home now, if we were going to do anything to the garbage collection, to allow extra pickup, or like an extra bag pickup each week, or anything like that, and I just wondered if you'd had a chance to follow up on that with anybody yet.
Thanks, Counselor Vane. I have submitted that to the region, and I have not received an answer. It, I, I guess what you're doing is telling me to follow up on it again, and I will. The, the question really is, is, I've had it three or four times, where constituents have said, can I put out an extra bag of garbage? I asked them that specific question, because we're all at home. So I would assume that the answer may be, and I'm just saying that, is that it may be no, because what's the difference whether you're home or whether you're away? If you, if you put your garbage and, and recycle properly, there shouldn't really be any difference. Anyway, that's just my, that's just my point.
Thank you, Counselor Furtick. Counselor Cadwell, you'd like to speak?
Am I on? Yeah, okay. Yeah, thanks very much, Mayor Jordan. Had a number of calls over the weekend, even today, with people that, well, not so much close on Mondays, but with regards to how Grimsby Road 12 will be operating. Any, any feedback, Counselor Furtick? I understand there's maybe some limitations. Have you been, are you aware of any, any information from an operational standpoint of Grimsby Road 12? Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Cadwell. I guess the first person I'd call is, is Counselor Cadwell, because he's on the board, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, I guess, the same question. Could you please follow up on it and let us know? To the best of my knowledge, I haven't heard anything. I know there's been lineups there, but I, I, how are you going to stop it? I, I don't know how to stop it.
I'll clarify that right now. I'll clarify that, that, that I believe Regional Road 12 Waste Site is closed, except for essential services right now. So, and I'd just like to commend the waste management people that are actually out there, actually keeping a service going during this. I'm sure it's, it's a difficult job at the best of times, but even made much more difficult by what's going on. So if, Counselor Vardy, I saw you had a question?
Yeah, if the, if the sort of depeners, I can't think of the name, the 7-Elevens or whatever, that sell the baggage tags, they're still open, so people can still purchase, you know, a tag for extra garbage.
Great, thank you. That's an excellent point. So any of the variety stores will sell you the tags quite easily. So, and, and it's something, but, all right. No further questions. Thank you very much, Counselor Furtick, for your update, and
My pleasure.
And now we have the reports. First up, CAO 2014, questions on? C A O, two thousand and fourteen, questions on or twenty zero four? It's expediting the recruitment and hiring of an economic development officer. Questions? Counselor Barty?
Given that we discussed in the budget, we agreed to this in the budget for the fall. Don't don't we need a two-thirds majority in order to revisit the budget?
Don't need a two-thirds majority because it's a timeline item? It's not an actual it's not actually revisiting the budget? That's the clerk's ruling right now?
I, if if I may beg to differ, it does have a budgetary impact because we'd be paying someone now when we've only calculated paying them from September. So I don't think it's just a matter of we have the approval. We have the approval to do it in September.
All right, our clerk's going to clarify that. Or actually, sorry, C A O is going to clarify. Thank you, Harry. All right, I think people can hear me now. We're just having a slight technical difficulty right now getting C A O slang. No one can hear him right now, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just speak on behalf of Harry.
All right. Thank you, Stephen.
Yeah. So there there is no impact to the budget. There was additional budget savings found from other positions that would start at a later date. So there's no actual budget impact.
Okay. Okay, we have a speaker's list starting right now. First up is Counselor Vane.
I just wanted to make everybody aware. I've received several emails. Main one from the Chamber of Commerce, Rebecca, the Director, Executive Director of Chambers Commerce. She was pleading with us to bring this Economic Development Officer on as soon as possible because other towns are have which have Economic Development Officers are really benefiting their businesses through the ability to help them apply for grants and loans and other government handouts. I had a business owner on the Main Street who is actually looking to revitalize Main Street. He's just bought a second store there, and he's looking to revitalize it, and he really would like us to have this done as well. And I think this is a very positive thing for businesses. And I know that Counselor Frake is bringing a motion forward next week or next meeting about the businesses and the impact. So this is hugely important that we get this officer as soon as possible.
Thank you, Counselor Vane. Counselor Bothwell?
Thanks. Counselor Barty's just waiting there to get her her two cents in, but I'm just gonna comment on. I think that this is an opportunity to really mobilize our G D A C Committee and put a working group together to, from what I read in the report, some of the work that the C A O is looking to put forward is gathering some of the information and putting it in a concise place. And a lot of that is out there already. I'm really, really impressed with what the Greater Niagara Chamber of Commerce is doing in combination with our Chamber of Commerce and the D I H provide those resources and information on their website. They have email blasts that go regularly out to the business community. A M O has posted some excellent resources on economic development for businesses. The City of Cambridge has a wonderful listing of resources that are available. And I think we can generate that same information over the next four months to assist our businesses through using our our very capable G D A C members and the strengths that they have working through the C A O to mobilize that information, gather it, take what's already available out there, and do a webpage on our town website or a separate one similar to what other municipalities are doing to consolidate that information. With regards to opportunities for grants and things like that, I mean, we're not looking at the government handing out more money than what they're already handing out through some of the federal and provincial initiatives for businesses. There's quite an extensive list of those resources that are available. So I think what we have to do is leverage what's already out there, make sure that the communication is is out there. And I think we can do that with the resources we have available to us through our own committee that would probably just would be a great resource to work with the community resources we already have available. I think we can save the taxpayer the money of four months of salary at fifteen, twenty thousand a month, whatever it is with benefits and everything else. And I think we can we can still effectively help our businesses in communications and streamline information in other ways, other than bringing on that that position right now, which we've we've not committed to until September. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Ritchie's up next. Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to thank you for this report, and I strongly support this document. And I had multiple, multiple emails from residents, business-minded-like individuals, and I wanted to share a few of those with you now. I write in support of the expedited hiring of an Economic Development Officer to serve the town of Grimsby. Grimsby enjoys strong potential to capitalize on the benefits of economic development that is durable and sustainable, well beyond its location and desirable building locations for residential development. If these are to be realized, however, a well-developed strategic plan that leverages the natural assets of the community and the greater region are required. The plan should focus on business expansion and retention, development of local business and entrepreneurial talent, and employ a strong metric-based evaluation system to track progress. Small towns across Ontario with well-developed economic development plans and focused staff are responding and being proactive in support of their businesses. For example, Lincoln has organized easy-to-navigate information site to help small business access funding grants and other incentives. The town of Calladen has developed a website and series and online and in private services that's organizing a start, grow, and invest paradigm to make it simpler for existing and local businesses to engage with and partner with the town to develop the local economy. Their act dev site features both a compendium of resources for businesses, business and the Business Innovation Zone portal and an online research portal to support businesses and local economic development. Port area is leveraging digital Main Street, Niagara's free webinars to support its local businesses by providing professional web and social media recommendations for moving your businesses, business activity online and keeping your audience engaged during COVID nineteen. In a matter of weeks, the world has seen the devastating impact of the coronavirus on financial markets and vulnerable industries. This crisis will undeniably have lasting effects on every community in Canada. In this, our experience is a collective one. However, how individual communities respond to this crisis will differentiate us by defining how well and how quickly each of those communities will recover.
Next audio?
Still there? We're good?
All right.
Communities with an Economic Development Officer dedicated to coordinating a response to the crisis will be in a better position to lead the community's resiliency and recovery efforts over communities lacking this resource. By expediting the hiring of an E D O who can jump quickly jump into action, the town of Grimsby will will be better able to address the important gaps created by this crisis, included, but not limited to, one organizational capacity. The dedicated resource focused on recovering and rebuilding efforts can provide the local business community with the engagement and economic development leadership they require. This will allow existing town staff to resume important tasks that are vital for the effective operation of our community. Communication by enabling the flow of consistent and accurate information between businesses and the town, the E D O can reduce confusion, frustration, and panic that can otherwise aggravate recovery challenges. Furthermore, the development of a formal communication platform and initiatives like a business retention expansion program can serve as mechanisms to collect qualitative and quantitative data about the impacts of this crisis. Three, analysis and strategy. Data is a critical tool in advancing recovery efforts. Intelligence gathered can be used to create strategies that address the communities' involving needs and and be leveraged to advocate for federal and provincial resources. Four, collaboration. An E D O can develop and coordinate collaborative response and recovery efforts that engage key economic stakeholders such as neighboring communities, local chambers of commons, workforce development organizations, the media, local post-secondary institutions, and key local businesses and organizations. Five, facilitation. By staying abreast of evolving funding opportunities, the E D O can facilitate business success by connecting local businesses to public and private programs and resources as they become available. Six, advocacy. Ongoing dialogue that an E D O can have with the federal and provincial governments is critical to ensuring Grimsby is continually communicating priorities and advancing on our behalf for available resources. We now find ourselves in a strange new world where none of us will walk away without impact to our daily lives in uncertain future. Individuals, families, employees, and businesses struggle in a new normal brought on by the global COVID nineteen pandemic. We wonder where it will be in the next eighteen to twenty-four months as we live through the life cycle of the coronavirus. Hopefully, moving forward, rebuilding from today's reality, for certain, it will be a changed world. All levels of government are taking unprecedented actions to keep people safe, healthy, and provide income sources and to attempt to protect our economy as best they can. The decisions made today are best efforts to manage both the known threat and our unpredictable future. As Canadians, we will pay for these actions well into the future, but worse would be the results of indecision and lack of action. Without an effective town communication strategy to better engage, inform, and align residents with town actions, you will continue to hear from your constituents who loudly oppose spending. The voice of our mayor and council will continue to be driven from our local newspapers, rallying residents and businesses to stop forward progress with the focus to lower taxes. It is still our responsibility to do the right thing for the whole community, even if that means spending to put measures in place to improve current and future outcome results. It is time for the town of Grimsby, R S as a council, to come together, putting aside any personal agendas and supporting actions and support actions that our town needs to remain healthy and viable, taking care of today's needs while laying the groundwork for tomorrow's future. There's been no more, there's been no time more urgent than now to have an Economic Development Officer. I urge all of us to initiate immediate recruitment of a permanent resource, supporting our businesses and improving our economy for future growth and stability. And on top of that, as we'll learn, recovery will be the most important thing at the end of this. And if we are not prepared to establish a good recovery, you know, we will, we will be lacking the other municipalities around us. Thank you.
Counselor Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I agree that I think I've received some emails from from residents, residents and business owners asking for help of an Economic Development Officer. And I'm reading here in the report that there is no incremental financial impact of advancing the hire of this resource on the two thousand and twenty budget. So to me, it sounds like some of the hires are going to get shifted around, and and this won't actually make a direct impact on on the budget. So I I think that when we are allowed to open, when these businesses are allowed to to open again, that we need to be prepared, and we need to hit the ground running. And I think that having an Economic Development Officer will help our businesses to be organized and to do that. So I'll support this. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell?
You hear me all right? Oh, here we go. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Can I ask that we we now hear the C A O's report to this? Think that's important.
Can you hear me now? I mean, the report, the report speaks for itself. There was just one component that hasn't been mentioned yet, which I thought why would it be important maybe to try and expedite this? I know that you're all aware that the Niagara Mayor's initiated Niagara Rapid Response Team, and they went out to what I understand is five thousand businesses in Niagara. Close to two hundred businesses have responded from Grimsby. We haven't got the data yet, but we should be getting that in the next two to three weeks. And I thought what would be really important for business retention, that now that the businesses are, you know, to us, what a great opportunity for our act dev officer to develop relationships with all the businesses in town and really understand the inventory of businesses that we have. And now, from an evidence evidence-based perspective, have the input from two hundred businesses and maybe follow up with the other three hundred that didn't respond yet. But to me, that that is the most critical part, and that's why I asked maybe to advance it. You know, by the time we actually find the right person, it might not be till June. So we're only talking about a very incremental amount to expedite that. But the most important part is that we can finally build a business retention strategy. We're going to input from all these businesses, develop the relationships, work with all the E D Os in Niagara, the other six, as well as link to Hamilton Economic Development Office, and try and make sure that we can help those businesses that are trying to navigate through all the funding mechanisms that are probably still to come. There'll be more to come and and work together as a team. And the one Economic Development Officer in the region that's helping us, she's representing five other municipalities. But I just felt I had to advance this to council that all hands would be on deck to analyze that data, meet with the businesses, and and really develop that business retention strategy now that they need us to help them navigate through this. It's a perfect time. And I think you do this around, probably get the right person around June, and then really help with that recovery.
Thank you, Counselor. Or sorry, C A O Schlang, Counselor Dunstall, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me? Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, great, great. Through you to our C A O, I I would like to support this, but also say that I'm very happy to see that he took the initiative to do the report to realize the devastation that is going on out there right now when it comes to the economy that we we haven't felt the full impact yet. I am a member of the Canada, the Restaurant Canada Association who says we've already lost ten percent of our restaurants. If it continues for another thirty to sixty days with these closures, we could see up to twenty-five percent of restaurants gone completely. Unemployment in that sector is at eight hundred thousand people right now. I I can't see how putting off or not not going ahead with this would be prudent and wise at this time when resources are strained everywhere. I think G D A C is doing a wonderful job, but these are laypeople. They're not on duty five days a week like an E D O would be listening and helping with the concerns of our businesses because when when this gets turned around, there's going to be a lot of suffering. And we need the E D O yesterday, really. We really do. So it's still going to take time as as our C A O says, we won't see somebody till possibly June. So we're only talking a couple of months. Please support this, everybody. I think it should be a unanimous vote. It really should be under these circumstances. This is unprecedented times. We've never seen anything like this in our life, and we really need an E D O. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dunstall. Was there someone else that that wants to speak? Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. He just will call water on what you're
He just will call water on what you're all saying. But this pandemic is not a neck, is not something was brought on by an economic situation, and I tend to agree with, with, with Counselor Bothwell. I think we have enough resources on staff, and I think the GDAC committee can help a lot, so can the DIA for that matter. You know, as, as Counselor Ferdy said earlier, you know, we do live in extraordinary times. The only thing that's going to get out of this mess is for the pandemic to end, for them to find a cure. I mean, let's face it, I mean, one, one economic development officer is not going to help the small businesses such as our restaurants, our hair salons, our coffee shops, our clinics, our dentists, our hotels, agents, you know, the real estate agent pubs, car dealerships, garages, pizza shops, craft shops, retail shops, law offices, accounting offices. They know what they have to do. They just want to get back to some kind of normal. And I don't think an economic development answer is going to be, is going to be the, the answer to that. I mean, what's happening now with economic development officers in other municipalities is really more of an information gathering source than anything else. That's about it. What our, what our businesses need here is money. They need cash. They need cash flow. Counselor Dunstall must know that. He's, he's in the restaurant business. He knows what that's like. I'm sure that for you, getting back to some kind of normal would be the answer, not to get an economic development answer to come, officer to come in and suggest to you what you have to do, because you know what you have to do. You just want to get back to normal. And and there's a lot of businesses that will not get back to normal. They will shut down because they will just, most of them are bankrupt or on the verge of bankruptcy right now. I mean, there's no investment money out there. The stock market lost trillions of dollars. Big companies are going to invest, are not going to invest anywhere right now. They just want to get back to their normals as well, and that's going to take a while. I still think that economic development is more of a economic expansion kind of projects and plans. We're looking at small businesses here. Hair salons don't need an economic development officer. Restaurants don't need an economic development officer. Let's be honest with ourselves. And a CD, an EDO is not going to save us. It's getting back to normality, getting, getting this, getting behind this virus and getting it out of our way. So let's go with the resources we have. If we all have to pitch in as counselors, great, let's do that. But I think that we have the resources and we have the manpower here to do what we need to do. And it doesn't require a highfalutin EDO to get us out of this hole. It's, it's, it's what we need. It's just to get past this virus and let these businesses who are, some of our bankrupt already, get back to some kind of normality before we start looking at economic development and economic, economic expansion. Let's be honest with ourselves. Anyways, I, I can't support this at this point in time and, and you know, hiring for me right now is for us to be hiring people. Even if we, even if we have some money in the budget, well, let's, we need that money in the budget. We're going, we're going to be, we're going to be strapped for revenues as well. We're not getting any user fees. We're not getting, we're not going to be getting anything from any of our own facilities for a while. So we're going to be revenue strapped as well. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of moving parts here, and I, I haven't seen the results that Harry was talking about by these, from these two hundred businesses. I would be interested in seeing that. Maybe there's something in there that will help me change my mind. But at this point in time, I do not think an EDO is going to get us out of this hole. I'm sorry, that's where I stand on that. And I hate to throw cold water on things, but sorry, I see EDO is not going to be gone for us. It's not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so speakers that haven't spoke, Counselor Vane? I don't believe you spoke on this yet.
Actually, I did, but I just want to add something further.
Well, then Counselor Cadwell should probably go first. Yeah, I, I believe he hasn't spoke on it, so. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just want to say a couple. I'll keep, I'll be brief and keep it somewhat short. There's a mention about GDAC. We have an awesome committee. We have some great, great people there. GDAC totally supports that the town moves quicker to get a economic, to get an EDO. There's some great talent on GDAC, but to get the right person as an EDO, someone with the, with the professionalism and in the skills, that this is the important thing is, is what an EDO would bring to the town of Grimsby is the economic development skill sets that, you know what, we, we don't have that. We're lacking that, and I don't mean that disrespectfully at all. But this, 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 again, an EDO, I'm a hundred percent supporting that we move quickly to, to, to support our businesses, because it's not going to be pretty. And we have to be right on top of it. We have to be in the game. We have to have skin in this. Let's, let's, and again, I'm supporting this, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. Counselor Sharp is next. Counselor Sharp?
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. If there's no one else to speak, I'd like to call the question.
Just that I'm sure you can call the question. I just have one small comment. I think that this pandemic and how resources are strained is much bigger than an EDO right now. And I think keeping the town in liquidity and spending the least amount available we can is the most prudent way to go right now. So I won't be in favor of it. That's just my comment. So I will call the question. Let's say moved by Council. Oh, Counselor Vardy didn't speak. You got to use your hand thing on the, on the side screen. So Counselor Vardy?
My hand thing is not on my side screen. Otherwise, I would use my hand thing. So I'm forced to use the actual hand.
Okay, we
So now you've got my attention. I, I think it's somewhat disingenuous to say that this won't have a budget impact when our budget is predicated on revenues, revenues that are not forthcoming. You know, we're not, we're not getting, you know, yet we still have expenditures. So we're not getting revenues for many of our parks and recreation. Now, when we have in terms of residential taxes, if we have a property that it, you know, has burned down, we give the homeowner a break that they don't have to pay their, their property tax while, while the home is unoccupied because of something befalling them. Why can't we do the same for our businesses that through no fault of their own have been forced to, to close? Yet, you know, to tell them you can defer your taxes, why not extend them the same privilege we give to residential?
Point of order.
No, I'm still talking. Why can't we not?
Yes, it, it's, that's, is off topic. We're talking about an economic development officer right now, and that's what the report has.
Well, then I'll just go back. Thank you to my, my point that it's disingenuous to say that we have money in the budget when the budget is predicated on revenues that are not forthcoming. So we have to look at our inputs as well as our outputs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vardy. Seeing no further discussion, I'll, the question's been called, moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Sharp, resolved that report CAO twenty dash zero four dated April first, twenty twenty be received and that we expedite the recruitment and hiring of the economic development officer from the September date approved in the twenty twenty budget to as soon as possible. Counselor Bothwell?
Nay.
Counselor Bothwell is nay. Counselor Dunstall? Counselor Dunstall is yea. Counselor Frake?
Nay.
Counselor Frake is nay. Counselor Cadwell? Counselor Cadwell is yea. Counselor Ritchie?
Yea.
Counselor Ritchie is yea. Counselor Sharp?
Yea.
Counselor Sharp is yea. Counselor Vane?
Yea.
Counselor Vane is yea. Counselor Vardy?
Nay at this time.
And myself is a nay. So that is carried. Up next, we have report PA twenty dash twelve, Grimsby Beach Terms of Reference, moved by Counselor Sharp, seconded by Counselor Bothwell. Discussion? Counselor Bothwell?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just wanted to reiterate, reiterate. I appreciate, first of all, that the amount of work that planning staff put into this terms of reference, it was quite extensive and the opportunity for the community and members of Heritage to comment on it. I would like to hear, before we vote on it, I, I would like to hear how planning staff incorporated the recommend, the, the comments from the public into the report. I would just like to maybe have a brief statement, if possible, from them on that so that we can address those, those comments from the public. I, I would also like to hear. One of the questions that came up or that I addressed was how the legal, the legal implications of the of the title of the subdivision and the property, which is something that we've brought up as, as a concern will be addressed, whether it's through the study or it will be time to be brought forward to the, prior to the consultant doing the work. So I just wanted to find out what the timing of that information is going to be and how it will be brought forward. But again, the other thing that came up through the constituents' comments to me was that they just hope that this process is going to be very fulsome and transparent with community engagement and with the, the crisis we're going through right now. The concerns that were raised were that if we're going to have difficulty doing the portions of the public engagement components of the study. So I would like to hear a bit from planning how they envision that, considering we're on a short timeline to have this accomplished. And if this pandemic continues for some time, what their, what their options are for, for that type of work to be undertaken. So just if some of those questions can be answered, it would, it would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Walter Basic is here to offer some comments before we have any more discussion. Walter?
Yes, thank you, Counselor, or Mayor Jordan. With respect to the questions that were asked by Counselor Bothwell, all of those questions were detailed quite extensively in the report. So if there are any specific questions that weren't addressed in the report, I could address those. But with respect to the pandemic and our ability to hold public, public engagements, as an example, that's, that's obviously going to be a difficult situation. And we're going to have to adjust how we do that, depending on the changing nature of the environment that we're going to be working within. We're largely going to be dependent on the upper levels of, of government, the province and the feds to dictate how we engage the public, whether or not we will be able to hold group meetings, whether or not we'll have to engage the technology similar to what we have here in order to engage the public. So that's something that will be assessed by the consultants with their, with their submissions. I don't have any answers for you specifically right now, but that's something that we'll need to explore and with the help of the consultants that are submitting their, submitting their bits.
Thank you, Mr. Basic. Any further comments? Counselor Vane?
Um, just in light of everything that both Counselor Bothwell and Mr. Basic have said, I was under the impression that, and maybe I'm getting my motions mixed up here. I was under the impression that we had the option to extend the interim bylaw for another year and therefore put off this particular study until next year, when, when everything is a little calmer and we can actually do the proper. Because I think we want to do this one right, and also it would save us a hundred thousand dollars for a year. So I need some clarification on that. I thought there was a
Counselor Vane, we, we can't extend right now.
Any reason why?
Yeah, we're just, we're not able to right now. It's, you can't extend the interim control bylaw for more than a year right now. Walter, if you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. An interim control bylaw has been passed. It has a year duration. We have to actively be engaged in a, in a study in order for that bylaw to remain in effect. If we delay or cancel a study, the appropriate thing for the municipality to do would be to rescind the interim control bylaw. It's my understanding that's not the intent of the municipality at this stage.
Thank you, Mr. Basic. Thank you for clarifying that. Was there any one else? I don't see anyone on the side speakers list, but no, I don't see any hands up as well. So moved by Counselor Sharp, seconded by Counselor Bothwell, resolved that report PA twenty twelve regarding the posed terms of reference for the land use planning study for Grimsby Beach be received and that the draft terms of reference document for the Grimsby Beach study attached as appendix A to the report be endorsed and staff be directed to, be directed to circulate it in accordance with the town's procurement policies. And we have a recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell?
Mayor Jordan, a point of order here. I just want to redirect you to your email of April third.
Yeah, it's, we, we're not going to talk about any specific cases, and we're just going to vote right now. Counselor Bothwell? That's a yea. Counselor Dunstall? It's a yea. Counselor Frake? It's a yea. Counselor Cadwell? That's a yea. Counselor Ritchie?
Yea.
That's a yea. Counselor Sharp?
Yea.
It's a yea. Counselor Vane?
Yea.
It's a yea. Counselor Vardy? It's a yea, and myself a yea, so that is carried. Up next, we have report F I N twenty dash zero five, two thousand and nineteen, Statement of Renumeration Expenses for Members of Council on Council Appointments to Boards and Other Bodies. And that's, you need a mover and a seconder for that. Counselor Ritchie? Seconder, Counselor Dunstall? Any discussion? Seeing none. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, seconded by Counselor Dunstall, resolved that report F I N twenty dash zero five, two thousand and nineteen, Statement of Renumeration Expenses for Members of Council on Council Appointments to Boards and Other Bodies be received for information. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell? That's a yea. Counselor Dunstall? It's a yea. Counselor Frake? It's a yea. Counselor Cadwell? It's a yea. Counselor Ritchie?
Yea.
It's a yea. Counselor Sharp?
Yea.
That's a yea. Counselor Vane?
Yea.
It's a yea. Counselor Vardy? It's a yea, and myself is a yea, so that is carried. Up next, we have a resolution. We have a mover by Counselor Vane, seconded, we need a seconder for this. It's about idling control study be referred to the Grimsby Green Advisory Committee. Counselor Dunstall? Discussion, seeing none. Oh, Counselor Bothwell, sorry.
Thank you. I'm just a little bit unclear as to why we would be directing this to the Grimsby Green Committee, because having attended the, the last number of meetings, the terms of reference and the mandate that we've been working on wouldn't encompass this, this type of action to look at idling control. So I'm just a little concerned that it doesn't fall within the work plan that the committee's been actually developing. I would see it more appropriate for I would see it more appropriate for Public Works and the Bylaw Department, considering it would probably be an enforcement issue and there would be a P O A or an AMPs penalty with regards to it. So I see this more as something that would be best a report being prepared reviewing other communities and studying it through through staff of Public Works and the Planning and Bylaw Department rather than Grimsby Green. I don't see that within their mandate. So I might, I would, I would suggest, I don't know if a friendly amendment is open to suggesting that it be referred to the building bylaw department to do that review and to come back and report. I just don't see how it fits in the
Counselor Bothwell, I believe C A O Schlang wants to make a comment on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and discussions with Sarah Sweeney. Her and I both felt that would be good at least to go to the Green Committee at first because they're looking at, I understand, well, there's other environmental aspects to to make Grimsby sort of a leader in green initiatives and they were just feeling that that might be a good place to go. We are having Public Works in the future attend some of those meetings, so it will in the end come out, but looking at more of a holistic view of how we can help the environment in Grimsby, that was sort of our thoughts.
Sorry, thanks. I just, I don't see that, that I didn't hear that come up at all in any of our discussions to date. So I'm just surprised that it's being now being put forward outside of the committee. So I just, at this point, I'm not, I wouldn't, I can't support it because I don't see it as part of the the work plan and the mandate. And I just think the scope of it is just too deep for what Grimsby Green is capable of of moving forward on it right now. Thanks.
Hi, Jordan.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm standing up because I, my back's a little stiff, but yeah, I just want to ask the question and maybe Mr. Basic can help me out with this. But I remember a number of years ago dealing with Mr. John Sean Well, and I believe we already do have a idling bylaw in place. Again, I'm just looking for clarification because I, I did deal with Mr. Sean Well with regards to a number of residents in the G S S High School area where a lot of the parents are parked and sitting there waiting to pick their kids up. So is there any I'm going to call it history to this that maybe Mr. Basic or maybe Mr. Schlang can add to this at all? I support it. I think it's a great idea. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. I think that's something that, yeah, we can certainly look into if there is any history. First, I'll have Counselor Sharp come, let him comment on this.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. So I'm on the Green Committee and so it was my understanding that our mandate, we don't really have a lot of staff. We don't have any staff. Or we don't have a budget for staff and I wasn't aware that we were going to have people from Public Works attending. But I'll support the bylaw, but I, but I just don't know if the Green Committee is the place to do it. We would like some input on it and our input would probably be favorable to having an idling bylaw, but we don't currently have, we have parks staff. And we haven't had any Public Works at our meetings. If you could clarify that, Harry Schlang?
I don't, I don't know if we need the C A O to clarify. What we could do is just send it to Grimsby Green Advisory when they meet and then deal with it there on a preliminary. If we feel that Public Works, maybe we can invite them to the next Grimsby Green and kind of move forward from that and see where we're starting at that because we really don't even have a starting point on this. So we'll maybe just push it there for right now and then move forward on it later when we do finally meet again. I think that might be just the way to go. I don't know if everyone else on council feels that way, but it's worth a shot. Counselor Sharp?
I agree with with Mayor Jordan. Thank you for, that's, it seems to be in the current situation that we can bring it to the committee and if we have to, we can either call in some Public Works or refer it to Public Works. So sure, thank you.
Counselor Vardy? Counselor Vardy?
I think it's a great initiative, but I think it should go to bylaw. I think sending it to the Green Committee is not, not the right place and I'd rather it go to the right place first off than then sort of get, you know, punch it around and then come back to council to have it go to the right place. Right to sense.
Counselor Vardy, we don't have a bylaw on idling, so going to bylaw before there's a bylaw probably wouldn't work very well, but that's just like, we have to, we have to study it first before we can get a bylaw for bylaw to enforce. So starting at Grimsby Green makes a lot of sense because we don't even have any parameters or any information or any information what other municipalities are doing. So any further questions? Seeing none, moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Dunstall, resolved that an idling control study be referred to the Grimsby Green Advisory Committee and staff for consideration. Counselor Bothwell?
As long as staff are the ones providing the reports. Okay.
Okay, that's a yay. Counselor Dunstall? That's a yay. Counselor Frake? It's a yay. Counselor Cadwell? It's a yay. Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
It's a yay. Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
It's a yay. Counselor Vane?
Yay.
It's a yay. Counselor Vardy? That's a yay and myself a yay. So that's carried. Up next, I have a notice of motion requested by Counselor Vardy and it's freezing all staff and discretionary expenditures. Counselor Dunstall, you have a question?
Oh, sorry, I'm reading my agenda. So, geez.
All right. Counselor Vardy, you have? You want to comment?
Yes.
Actually, there's no comment. There's no discussion on a notice of motion. Sorry.
Sorry about that. Reading my agenda. I guess I didn't realize my hand was up.
All right, fair enough. I'll start this over again. Counselor Vardy?
That we request a two thirds vote so we could discuss it because I think it is a matter of urgency.
So a separate motion. So you'd like to have a separate motion to to reconsider or suspend the order to allow discussion this evening on this notice of motion?
Yes.
All right, our clerks preparing that now?
Mayor Jordan, I just have a question. If we suspend the rules of order, will that, will that allow discussion on all of these notice of motion? And will, does it suspend the rules only for this?
We're suspending the rules. We're suspending the rules for this one. We have a mover on Counselor Vardy. I, we have a seconder for this, Counselor Frake, that will suspend the rules of order to or suspend the order, meeting order and we'll vote on that to consider this separately.
Mayor Jordan, or maybe if the clerk could help me. Are we suspending it just for this or will we be able to do any, anything for the remainder of the meeting?
We're spending, we're suspending it just for this motion.
Okay, thank you.
Point of question?
Counselor Ritchie?
So do we have the, are we bringing this motion for, like suspending the rules to bring this motion forward right now?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
You're going to bring the motion forward right now?
So that's moved by Counselor Vardy. Second by Counselor Frake. Resolved that the rules of procedures be suspended in regards to section five dash dot 20 of bylaw 781 to govern the proceedings of council, local board and committee meetings in regard to the notice of motion on freeze all staffing and discretionary expenditures. Now I'll call the roll call for in favor or against. Counselor Cadwell, you have a question?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just reading through the the notice of motion. I hope I'm in line here, but will that affect the E D O? I think that's important for everybody to understand. It was just approved.
Yeah, that was passed. So in the clerk's decision is, or opinion is that it, that will not affect the E D O. All right. Counselor Bothwell? It's a yay. Counselor Dunstall?
Nay.
It's a nay. Counselor Frake? It's a yay. Counselor Cadwell? It's a nay. Counselor Ritchie?
Nay.
It's a nay. Counselor Sharp?
Nay.
It's a nay. Counselor Vane?
Nay.
Counselor Vardy? It's a yay and myself a yay. So that is defeated. Yeah, so bringing the, I'll read the notice of motion now. It was
If, do we not have, do you not have to have two thirds majority, I guess, two thirds of majority in order to discuss it?
Or in order to discuss it, this
Do we have two thirds majority?
No, we don't.
Okay.
It was five, four.
Okay, all right.
Five against, four in favor. All right, I'll read the notice of motion. Whereas the World Health Organization declared a global COVID-19 pandemic on March 11th, 2020 and is continuing until further notice. Whereas the province of Ontario declared a state of emergency on March 17th, 2020, which is continuing until further notice with some estimates until at least July 2020. Whereas the province of Ontario on March 24th, 2020 declared that all non-essential businesses be closed until further notice. Whereas many local businesses face financial hardships as a result of these closures, which may impact their viability and return, in return will reduce commercial tax revenue to the town of Grimsby. Whereas many Grimsby residents will be negatively financially impacted by these measures, including reduced incomes and job losses. Whereas the town of Grimsby revenues will be negatively impacted by parks, recreation and cultural closures. Whereas the financial impacts of these measures on residents may negatively affect the town of Grimsby revenues even after these emergency measures have been lifted. Be it resolved, the town of Grimsby implement an immediate hiring freeze for all new and replacement staff and that all discretionary and contract spending be frozen until such time as a fulsome report on the future state of the town's resources can be prepared and considered. I acknowledge that the notice of motion will be given consideration at the next council meeting. Up next, we have another notice of motion. Study impact of business tax revenues. This requested by Counselor Frake. I will read it. Whereas municipal governments such as Grimsby face unprecedented financial challenges imposed by COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic, which will impact the balancing and maintaining of the 2020 budget and will potentially affect the expansion of future services and facilities in a way that is fiscally unsustainable. Whereas the Grimsby tax revenues are directly dependent on a vibrant economy which is made up of property taxes received from businesses, landlords and residences, which will be negatively impacted from the economic effects of COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the business space in Grimsby is made up mostly of small and medium sized businesses such as restaurants, pubs, personal services, et cetera, who make major contributions to the local economy through employment, tourism, retail, sales, et cetera, which are currently shut down and may never reopen, thus decreasing the future of Grimsby's tax revenues. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has caused and will cause more considerable health and economic disruption for an indeterminate period and non-essential businesses of Grimsby, either directly or through their landlords pay business property taxes at two to three times the residential rates and have been mandated to shut down, making it inappropriate for the town, Niagara region and the Ministry of Education to be collecting any taxes during the mandated shutdown period, thus their opportunity to earn income to enable them to pay taxes has been taken away by government who also wants to collect them. Whereas our local businesses are now faced with a shutdown, not of their choice, will have many other financial hardships to solve, but this would be a significant step ensuring a resurgence in retail economy necessary for the vibrancy and revenues of the town. Whereas the future consequence for Grimsby and Niagara region of not providing relief to these non-operating enterprises is that many will not reopen and the local economy will be crippled for years. Thus, what we do today or don't do will have a future impact on Grimsby's future tax revenues. Further, be it resolved that town staff perform an impact study of the effects of COVID-19 on the shortfall of future business and property tax revenues from the merchants of Grimsby and furthermore to investigate any potential assistance we can offer local merchants and service enterprises as it is, it's inappropriate that businesses be charged taxes for the period they are shut down. I acknowledge that the notice of motion will be given consideration at the next council meeting. Up next, we have correspondence. Moved by Counselor Ritchie. Seconded by Counselor Bothwell. Resolved that the correspondence received from the city of St. Catherine's with reference to graffiti in the city of Wannan with reference to out of the cold program be received. So recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell? It's a yay. Counselor Dunstall? It's a yay. Counselor Frake? It's a yay. Counselor Cadwell? It's a yay. Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
It's a yay. Counselor Sharp? It's a yay. Counselor Vane?
Yay.
It's a yay. Counselor Vardy? It's a yay and myself a yay. So that is carried. Up next, we have correspondence from the region of Niagara. But the early on child and family centers moved by Counselor Cadwell. Seconded by Counselor Bothwell. Resolved that the correspondence received from the region of Niagara with reference to approval of interim levy dates and amounts and and the early on child and family centers be received. Counselor Bothwell, a comment?
Thanks. I think if this is the correspondence that I, that I read about, congratulations that the Strive, Strive unit, Strive people and Port cares got the early Ontario contract for Grimsby in combination, correct?
Yeah, I believe that's correct. Yes.
So I just wanted a little clarification because right now at the Grand Avenue Community Center, Strive, Strive is operating out of that facility right now. So this good news story means that Port cares will be joining them there or sharing just because we approved the the Grand Avenue facility as a municipal, municipal capital class facility. So there's exemptions with regards to an agreement and an M O there's exemptions with regards to an agreement and an MOU with Strive right now, so I just wanted to make to see how that impacts with the partnership with Port cares now, if that impacts the that MOU, that's all just down the road, I think it's great news, I just hope that if they're partners that the that that arrangement is extended to Port cares as well with regards to the the benefits of the municipal class facility. Breaks, that's all, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bothwell. Because we're just receiving it, we'll have certainly your comment will be noted and we'll make sure that we get an answer. All right. Read the resolution councillor Bothwell. Say yay. Councillor Dunstall? Say yay. Councillor Frank? Say yay. Councillor Cadwell? Yay. Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Those are both yays. Councillor Vane?
Yay.
Councillor Vane's a yay. Councillor Barty? Councillor Barty's a yay and myself a yay, so that is carried. Up next, we have correspondence from Hamilton Health Sciences for local share financing for West Lincoln Memorial Hospital. We need a mover and a seconder for that councillor Ritchie moved councillor Vane second. Moved by councillor Ritchie, seconded by councillor Vane, resolved that correspondence from Hamilton Health Sciences with reference to commitment of the local share financing for the new West Lincoln Memorial Hospital we received. Councillor Bothwell? Councillor Bothwell's in favor, councillor Dunstall is in favor, councillor Frank is in favor, councillor Cadwell is in favor, councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Is in favor, councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Is in favor, councillor Vane? Is in favor, councillor Barty? Is in favor, and I'm in favor, so that is carried. Up next, we have correspondence from Niagara Power Incorporated with reference to shareholder resolution.
Second. I know. My name's spelled wrong in this. There's an E on the end of sharp.
Okay, that'll be noted. I guess in the correspondence, there's supposed to be an E on the end of sharp. Yeah, we'll get it corrected councillor Sharp. Councillor Bothwell? Is a yay. Councillor Dunstall? Say yay. Councillor Frank? Is a nay. Councillor Cadwell? Is a yay. Councillor Ritchie? Is a yay. Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Is a yay. Councillor Vane?
Yay.
Z A. Councillor Barty? Is a nay. And myself is a yay, so that's carried. I need a mover and a seconder for the bylaws. Moved by councillor Dunstall. Seconded by councillor Vane. Moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Vane, resolved that leave be given to introduce bylaws number twenty dash twenty-five to twenty dash twenty-eight and twenty dash thirty-three to twenty dash thirty-eight inclusive, and that be same read a first time. On favor? Oh. Councillor Bothwell, you have a comment?
Thank you, I'd like to address bylaw twenty thirty-three. I provided the clerk with a draft motion early this afternoon. This is the bylaw with respect to council remuneration and it, I'm just going to pull up my my notebook. I don't have it's I don't have to lift it because it's a bylaw, so I'm just addressing the bylaw, which is in the agenda.
Yeah.
And the concern that I have is that this bylaw is providing council with two percent increase, which was effective actually January first twenty. Was rolled into the staff increases, which were negotiated a year ago, and then we were automatically affected by that and given this increase, which came kind of as a surprise. So I'm not comfortable with the motion, the bylaw going forward as it's worded to for the next four years to give us a two percent increase this year in our salaries, considering the recent report that was provided by H R on council remuneration. So what I did was I drafted a motion and I'll read that motion or the clerk can read that motion either way. Which I I will ask for a seconder to the motion and then put this forward for a vote. So I'm my motion is resolved that whereas the community is facing unprecedented personal and financial hardship as a result of COVID-19, and whereas the town of Grimsby will be negatively impacted and face financial challenges as a result of COVID-19, whereas council remuneration as of January first, 2020 is significantly above the median for municipalities of comparable size out of the eight municipalities of populations thirty thousand or less, as evidenced in the February third, 2020, HRO three council compensation part two report to council. Whereas the report states the 2020 median annual median annual remuneration for councillors in comparable municipalities is fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-eight, and town of Grimsby councillors received twenty one thousand thirty-four dollars. The median annual remuneration for mayor in comparable municipalities is thirty eight thousand five seventy-seven, and the town of Grimsby mayor receives forty six thousand five eighty-three. Whereas the annual increment increases established in bylaw twenty thirty-three are reflective of the same percentage as negotiated and agreed to for town of Grimsby staff, and that council supports efforts to mitigate the negative financial impacts to the town's resources during this crisis. Therefore, council endorses the removal of the annual increment on council salaries effective the pay of April twenty-third, 2020 for the remainder of the 2020 fiscal year, effectively freezing salaries at the 2019 levels, and that staff be directed to action the required pay change effective April twenty-third, 2020, or the earliest date set by finance payroll timelines, and that bylaw twenty thirty-three be amended accordingly. So I'm looking for a seconder on that motion.
I'll second that.
Was a seconder? So. Seeing notice councillor Barty would like to discuss. Oh, sorry, I see other hands over there too, so councillor Barty first and then councillor Vane, then councillor Sharp.
I just would like to say that I agree with councillor Bothwell. Given the kinds of hardships people are are facing right now with so many people being laid off and knowing that our town's revenues are going to be effective, this is the the wrong time to accept any kind of increase.
Thank you councillor Barty. Up next, we have councillor Vane.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is something that's been going on for years is that we tie our salaries to the staff. This is not something I think we need to change, the penny a month that we would save by not taking this increase, I don't think is going to make any difference to anybody. I think we need to just keep the town moving forward as much as possible and stop doing this grandstanding, let's just be reasonable and just keep moving on, thank you.
Porter? I take offense to the comment of grandstanding. That is inappropriate.
I think grandstanding
We're facing a serious financial crisis globally, and to be accused of grandstanding is completely inappropriate, and I had I object to the members, the members' comment. And you know, and aside from that, you know, a nickel here, a nickel here, and it starts to add up to real money.
All right, thank you councillor Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just want to clarify, this is just a cost of living adjustment. And so it's like two percent increase per year, it's tied with the staff increases, so I think that I just wanted that clarified.
Not a cost of living increase, I just make that clear, it's a negotiated increase to the
I wasn't asking you councillor Bothwell, I was asking staff.
I don't think staff are here to answer that, you might answer that.
Okay, I we need, we really need to stop the we Stevens Stevens going to clarify.
The increases. The increase is part of the negotiated staff increases. A bit of feedback, hold on. Okay, okay, the the two percent is part of that negotiated staff increase, so two percent in 2020, two point five percent in 2021 and 2022, and two percent in 2023.
Thank you, Stephen. All right, so. I guess we'll vote on it now, I see no other comments and no one on the speakers list. Councillor Bothwell? Say yay. Councillor Dunstall?
Mayor Jordan, can you just clarify, we're voting on the amendment or what are we voting on?
We're voting to 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 amend and take away the two percent increase and the subsequent subsequent increase. So councillor Bothwell is voting in favor of her her resolution. So councillor Dunstall?
The nay, a nay.
That's a nay. Councillor Frank?
Yay.
Councillor Frank is a yay. Councillor Cadwell?
Nay.
Councillor Cadwell is a nay. Councillor Ritchie?
Nay.
Councillor Ritchie is a nay. Councillor Sharp?
Nay.
Councillor Sharp is a nay. Councillor Vane?
Nay.
Councillor Vane is a nay. Councillor Barty? Councillor Barty is a yay, and I myself am a yay, so that is defeated. So. All right, so I'm reading the bylaw resolution again, moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Vane, resolved that leave be given to introduce bylaws number twenty dash twenty-five to twenty dash twenty-eight and twenty dash thirty-three to twenty dash thirty-eight inclusive, and that be read a first time. Councillor Bothwell? That's a nay. Councillor Dunstall? That's a yay. Councillor Frank?
Yay.
Say yay. Councillor Cadwell? Say yay. Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
It's a yay. Councillor Sharp?
Yeah.
Say yay. Councillor Vane?
Yay.
Say yay. Councillor Barty?
I believe councillor Frank's trying to get your attention. I am a nay on this.
So councillor Frank is a nay as well?
I'm sorry, it was a nay, sorry.
All right, councillor Barty's a nay. And I'm a nay, so that is carried. Need a mover and a seconder for the second and third reading of the bylaws. Councillor Vane, councillor Ritchie? Moved by councillor Vane, seconded by councillor Ritchie, resolved that leave be given to introduce bylaws number twenty dash twenty-five to twenty dash twenty-eight and twenty dash thirty-three to twenty dash thirty-eight inclusive, read a first time, be now read a second and third time and finally passed, and the mayor and the town clerk to sign and seal the same and rule of councils of the contrary notwithstanding. Councillor Bothwell? It's a nay. Councillor Dunstall? Say yay. Councillor Frank? It's a nay. Councillor Cadwell? Say yay. Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Say yay. Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Say yay. Councillor Vane? Say yay. Councillor Barty?
Nay.
It's a nay. Myself is a nay, so that is carried. Up next, we have any new business councillors? Councillor Cadwell?
Just like to pass on with the town of Grimsby. Another staff member, thirty-five year member Randy Duncan. Randy was a backhoe machine operator, and he was also a was he was one of the foremen for the roads department. I did work with Randy for a number of years, I was water department, he was roads department, and a true dedicated staff member, he gave the town everything, he really did, so my condolences, I hope I think I'm sharing all of counsel in the town of Grimsby, condolences to Randy's family, Randy unfortunately passed away on March thirtieth, so I wish his family all the best. I also want just on a positive, good note, I'd like to just do a bit of a follow up to the mini putt that the Kinsmen ran back in way back, and we could get together and have some good times. It was Sunday, March the eighth, they ran their mini putt for the the equipment for the hospital, it was a great day walking around the town with the golf club in hand and t-shirts and rate turnout, it was another sellout, and I think it was approximately about fourteen thousand dollars raised. If I'm on repeat here, I apologize because I just went through my notes and anyway, I just want to bring that up again because it's it's good work for the hospital, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you councillor Cadwell, councillor Ritchie?
No comment, I just wanted to say that's great work by the Kinsmen, any money towards our hospital is fantastic.
Great, councillor Vane?
We we've all said this, and I know you, Mayor Jordan, have put out a video and made phone calls, just a reminder to people, stay six feet apart, social stuff is, the people that are disregarding it are just being downright rude, and it's not fair to people around you. We close the parks and the trails for a reason, so please do regard the six feet distance, you have two options, stay six feet apart from each other or look at six feet under, because people are dying from this, and it's not just old people, we've had a three year old, sorry, a four year old and a seven year old, get it, we've had a twenty year old recently die, it's actually hit Grimsby now, so let's be realistic and let's be considerate of others, keep apart and stay home, thank you.
Thank you councillor Vane, I echo your advice and and it certainly it's more much social and physical distancing is much more as than a requirement, it's it's actually, it may save yours and someone else's life, so that's how important it is, and that that's where we're at right now. It's it's not a game, folks, it is, it is life or death, quite literally, so it should never be taken lightly, we don't need to take any chances, there is absolutely no need to. Any other further business with people? Seeing that, I'll just close up with a little bit. Just that I've been working very hard trying to keep council updated with with messages and through both the regional messages and as and through both the regional messages, and as well as the, the town messages, and we've been meeting daily, the EOC up at Fire Station 2, and I just want to echo that we have the best staff around, best staff anywhere. Everyone is committed to getting on top of this. For such a small community, with such a small staff, I really feel everyone is doing an amazing job. And, and we're moving forward to, to do our best to mitigate any outbreaks that we will have here in town, and we're just working tire- tirelessly to, to reduce the, the cases, and, and to get this down, on the downslide. I really feel that the next couple of weeks are crucial to maintaining physical distancing and social distancing, and just using extreme common sense. I guess the government candidate now says that, that wearing something over your face will protect other people as well as yourself, so it is something certainly to think about when you are certainly going to a grocery store, or going to be out where there may be closer contact, so just want to end with that, that I have faith in the, in the citizens of Grinsby, the staff of Grinsby, and our counselors, that we can really do a, a job to, to make this the impact of COVID-19 as little as possible in the town of Grinsby, and the sooner we can get to actually mitigating this virus, the better. So I'll end with that, just everyone be safe and take care. And so the meeting is adjourned, the next meeting is Monday, April 20th, at 7:00 PM, and it will be another virtual meeting, thank you, and good night.